It's now ten o'clock, we'll go ahead and open up our regular session of February first, two thousand and seventeen. If you're long, please either silence or turn off their cell phones and then turn this thing off.
Let's put the flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, can you go over, do you have changes or additions for today?
Correct. I have no deletions, but several additions. Road Department is going to bring forward a proposal for shoulder-in-machine purchase. We are going to cover the nuisance ordinance and hopefully set dates for our public hearing. Public Health has added an MOU for an immunization grant under legal updates. We are going to discuss with legal counsel the ways of necessity brought forward by our assessor, and we have an addition of a right-of-way recent change. That's it.
Okay. So, public comment. We don't have any public here at ten oh five in a few minutes. Have we gotten any of our, the auditors?
Yeah. She's like a set of heels. I'll watch.
Well, today it's kind of interesting because most of your things, Mr. Bailey, didn't feel like it was going to be safe driving to come down today. Most of the other items, if we were to skip down to them, we really wanted to have them present. So, this is perfect. Good morning. Just go ahead and grab a chair. Even now, we're, if you don't mind repeating whatever you talk about in the first two minutes, we'll probably open this up to you. You're timed out at ten oh five. So, if the public comes in and wants to know what you told us, the next two minutes. Are you ready?
Yeah, I think so.
Ever like walking off the street getting cold?
I mean, I'm fine, wasn't sure. No, I've been burnt this morning. So, I thought it has to last the main ones.
Personal.
I think.
Well, welcome. Glad you did it over, okay? Where's your, your stuff out? Do you want some coffee? Got some hot water?
Do you want to be in home?
Let's not.
Want some change with your coffee?
No, I'm fine, I think I'm okay. Okay, so, I don't know if you guys have the audit in front of you on the letter that we sent. The three-page letter, this is just our, kind of a form letter called a working letter. They kind of go through the procedures and the audit and that and that thing. Really, there hasn't, there wasn't anything in here, if we have any disagreements or anything like that, we have to note that this letter, really everything to note in this letter. On page two, in the middle of page two, there's a document for estimates in the financial system. Carrie, I think that they might not have that letter.
Oh, this is like a, just a.
It's just, and it's kind of a form letter. It just kind of goes through processes. Basically, it's a letter that says if there's any issues with the audit, we have to report it here also, and we didn't report it in case of.
Okay. Yeah, we get the December.
You have the management letter?
Yeah. Carrie, would you mind moving that mic over by you and kind of talking to the audience? These are meetings are recorded, they're videoed, and.
I can do that.
Thank you.
So, the management letter that you guys have, anything that we noticed while we're auditing, we put in this letter, what are little things or make things wrong when we kind of put anything in this letter with a term of holes or any kind of recommendations in my mind?
No, we can.
And the first section is just a normal boilerplate saying that we look at your internal controls, we don't provide an opinion, but we also don't look at everything because we pick a sample based on risk. So, the higher risk items, we take a higher sample of test and lower risk, we take a lower. That way, we can get the most risky of items in our test, and we'll put better. And the first part talks about internal controls. This is something that we've noted every year, is just a note that, just to try to make sure you keep segregation and duty separate, there has been voluntary oversight by personnel, so we don't have any huge holes in control or things like that, and just, you know, just to keep the wire up and, and to keep on top of, especially if you happen to have any switch, switching over personnel or anything like that, it's very important to keep on top of that. Payroll, we noted that the play handbook is old, it may not reflect the policies, but however, we do know there's got data process, and so it's good to see that you're proactively looking at those different policies and features, especially with the changes in payroll laws and all that kind of stuff. So, because of GAZB sixty-eight, which is a PERS statement, we are required to look at a little more in-depth PERS data. So, we have to look at kind of what you have in your system compared to what PERS has in our system. And so, out of the nine employees that we tested, we had a few differences between like the PERS salary and salary of the financial software, and we also noted one that had a birthday error. So, PERS is not a very easy system to work with, and I totally understand that, and that could be parts of it, that kind of a thing, but it's just important to make sure that your PERS data is being reported very.
So, is that mine by chance? Because I'd asked Nikki if you'd change it from nineteen fifty-two to nineteen sixty.
I don't believe so, no, but good try.
You'd still be older than me.
I can, I can report, though, that we did look into that, and there were reports from even years back that were still in suspension, and that has all been corrected. And when you come the next time, it's not going to be in the fiscal year that we, that you looked at here, but it'll be fiscal year and this fiscal year, but it should correct itself, because we've gotten all of those, they were, some of them were really, really old and still in some suspension plan that, so.
It's been, it's been looked at, though, in the safety area. We should be correct on it.
And so, that's good to know. You know, PERS is going to be even more and more looked at closely because of the cost of PERS, and so it's just going to stay active while keeping all that data current, correct also. Capital assets, you know, we talk about capital assets kind of every year. We didn't have any reports available at Fieldwork when we were here in September. However, we did get the reports in the office, and we're able to test it. And I would note that it was better than last year. We spent a lot of time on it last year. This year was a little bit easier, probably because we spent a lot of time last year. But it's just kind of a hard thing to keep up on, so really, it's only used for audit purposes, because your insurance purposes takes a totally different look at that, like about five hundred bucks compared to a cap loss of five thousand. And so, it's just something that, it's kind of tough to test sometimes for us because of the way the systems are set out, with the two different systems here. But, the more we can improve that, the better we would be. And then, the last thing in the letter is road costs. We just noticed a few discrepancies, very minor discrepancies, between the project cost system that the road, road department uses and the different time cards, so just, you know, and one, there was an equipment that was noted that was used, or they had quite much time cards, so that's something we had specifically looking because of Oregon standards. So, overall, pretty thinking management letter, just some little items that we noticed that could be approved a little bit, but, but very good still.
Well, I, I've been there with several different departments and everything, and everything that's here, which is very minimal, that's been looked at, working on the PERS and the capital assets and all that, so I'd just like to say everybody works on that, very good job. But audits is like, we talk, and it's our scorecard in a way of how we're doing, so pretty proud of working on this, and this is a very good one.
Yeah, and you know, and here, it's always good to know if we notice anything, usually the next year it's fixed. And so, you guys, and everybody takes a, you know, very responsibility on that, and they, it's very, very good to see, so.
Yes, very proud of them.
Yep, I agree.
So, that's just kind of the management letter. I don't know if you guys want me to go over in the audit in numbers or anything like that, or if you have any specific questions on it?
We got it. I, I thumbed through it. It's a pretty thick document, so I guess I, for me, if there's something that, whether it's Ann or Nikki or anyone else that's reviewed, or Carrie, if there's something specific that we should.
I'll note that in the audit report, we gave an unmoderate opinion, because we didn't have any big issues, and so that's the best you can get, a basically an audit. And the same with our single audit, we didn't have any findings at all, internal control or numbers. And so, I will note that in the audit, that needs to change, but that's a job that everybody.
This single audit is required for our federal expenditures, so that's the federal test of our internal controls and accounting and things like that.
Basically, what we do, because you have over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of federal expenditures, we have to take and test certain major programs, and we test major big programs or higher-risk programs, and then if you have any findings that you're not following the grant agreements, or are they not being correctly reported in the financial system, we have to report that, so we do not have anything like that to report. And because of that, this also goes to a federal website, Clearhouse website, so it's available publicly because this is a, besides Secretary State website. But really, there wasn't any big changes in, in standards this year. Last year, we had the huge GAZB sixty-eight, and I should probably point out on the statement of debt position because of the GAZB sixty-eight, and then we touched on this last year when I came and presented the audit, because of the moral decision last year, after they had already done their calculations on the asset reliability and the pension, that you actually had an asset on their books last year for pension, and this year it's a two point five million dollar liability. And so, because, and that had all to do with the reversal of that decision, and so because of that, it skewed their data, they could. But, and then coming down the road, we'll have a new, not this is this year you're in, but the next year, we'll have to have a new GAZB statement also, that's kind of follows the GAZB sixty-eight, the PERS, except for its other post-employee benefits. So, we don't quite know how that's going to affect, I can't say much yet, but it is something from the road that we'll look at differently, and probably different tests by November.
Do you understand all that?
Well, that's going to be looking at insurance or any other benefits that we would have a liability for a retiree, so in our instance, we don't really have that.
Well, a lot of them, they, they led to retirees, they pay their own premiums, but they, a lot of damage group plan until they get Medicare age sometimes, and so because there's an applied benefit.
Yeah, okay.
Because you get a better rate than you would if you just got it in the market, they want to book that kind of stuff, and so it's not anything you'd ever see financially, really? In dollar wise, except they also have a financial statement, so we'll see how that goes.
We're, we're already reporting some of that scenario, and right now, I think we have one employee that's doing that, retired and still working just enough to make sure it's always covering insurance that we allow him to stay on until he reaches that age, which is part of that whole Affordable Care Act reporting.
And, you know, GAZB forty-five is a different plan, so it's, I think, so it was well, and that started this whole process, but you guys were required to report anything since your, your insurance plan kind of makes it where there is no cost, and so we'll see if the new GAZB table will actually keep with that process, or we'll find out probably this year what they're going to do.
So, I, I need to go back, because we can kind of get right on by the asset and how the two point five million dollar liability.
Correct. On the GAZB, and it has to do with.
Page thirty-eight.
Yeah, the notes are, are really a detailed document. So, yeah, last year. There's lots of different pages on this PERS stuff.
That's the discussion of it, if you want to show.
That's the discussion of the different discount rate on page thirty-eight, so the rate that they expect to earn.
Yeah.
That shows just if it was at, because right now, the discount rate is seven point seven five percent, they expect to earn seven point five, seven five percent per year, and so that just shows the sensitivity, if they expect those PERS percentages less, that would be your liability for a year. What percentage more are we about the, I should see if I have that number, if it's from last year. So, on page thirty, one fifty-five, sorry, there's a schedule that shows different PERS, and this is all from the prior because of GAZB sixty-eight, and so last year, we had an asset of about a million dollars, and that flipped to a liability of two point five million, though in two thousand and fourteen, if you reported then, you would have a liability of six hundred and seventy-three thousand. And that wasn't totally major for everything, that was just kind of their rough estimate for the beginning year, because that was the, that was the initial year we had of the GAZB sixty-eight. But because of the fact they changed those, that more, that more decision changed the other decision made by the court, decided that was not correct due, that's why it looked so badly.
Well, I, I don't think we have enough time today to get me to understand everything you're saying, Carrie, but, you know, I'm basing my question kind of on, when we're talking two point five million, we're talking six hundred thousand, we're talking a liability, and then as Ann has, has been sharing this week on the early projections for a thirty-five percent PERS increase of a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but these liabilities are way more than that. I, I don't know how, how we completely understand what our real liability is, because we've been paying into the system, and we have people retire and they receive the benefits, and we're going to see this monumental increase because of the.
And you're not going to get an exact amount, because, I mean, the liabilities they book are based off of an actuarial study, which takes into effect what they expect you to retire, you know, expected date of death, kind of a thing, average of that, how long they expect you to work, and so there's so many different factors in there, you're not going to get a, a good answer for that, that's a, the exact amount.
And because we're part of the pool, we're part of this, the local government pool, we don't even have data just specifically for us.
Nope.
So, this is our share of the pool's exposure as well.
Yeah, because they take the whole state PERS system in general, and then they break it out of percentages to each district that has PERS. And so, it, they may not be correct on that either, so, you know, but it's kind of a.
It's monumental.
Exactly.
So, the longer people live after retirement, the more exposure we have.
Or the lo, and the longer they, if, longer they work before, you have the less, you know, because they're still paying into it until you retire, retire seventy-five compared to sixty, let's say.
Gotcha.
You know, you're still paying for the fifteen years, and so there's so many different factors that depends on, the one thing we do know is Ann's talking to you about is the rates are going to increase largely.
Yeah.
In the next four ratings. And then they, I don't know what you're guys' rate is, but.
Let's not, I don't, I don't know that we can go out that far yet, because let's hope that.
Well, that's what, so far, unless they do legislation that changes, I think that's what you're looking at, yeah.
Yeah, like I say.
That's probably three by eight, but the first one, they already come up with their own.
So, the message Denise says you can't retire at three thirty-five.
No, we're retiring.
I can't anyway.
Well, no, retire so we know what your cost is. Then we'll have a known figure.
Yeah, if you retire at less than full benefit, maybe that would help too.
Well, if we just change the life expectancy down by three years, then a lot of that liability goes away. I mean, that's what they do.
Yeah, except for it's backwards, life expectancy went up by.
Yeah, I, that's what I'm saying, it just keeps going up, and then.
That's your hardly about defined benefit plan, because they're trying to predict all this stuff happening, because you're not able to predict.
You know, I'm just thinking about one, one agency that's PERS corrections, state corrections for their officers, their life expectancy is not very long after retirement, so the number that they use for you're going to live to this, doesn't, doesn't come close to those PERS employees' life expectancy. But, you know, some of the PERS employees' positions are pretty stressful, and their life expectancy is a lot.
So, police and fire are in their own segment.
Is it different?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And they actually can retire a lot earlier as a police and fire. A lot of people I've seen actually do two careers of.
That's local government, state, and federal, everyone all has those programs.
So, the life expectancy of law enforcement is down west than.
Looks likely, but they're in their home, their own category, they're outside of.
I'm in one of those.
In that all base of that.
I'm in one of those, not really, well, after retirement categories.
But then you don't ever retire.
That's why there's no way of working actuary.
That's why you wanted his birthday to be, well.
Nineteen sixty.
So, we talked true numbers. Our, our tier one, tier two rate is going to nineteen point nine percent in payroll starting July first, two thousand and seventeen. That does not include the six percent employee pickup. So, we're looking at almost twenty-six cents per dollar salary that we pay, will go to PERS for the tier one, tier two, which is our highest.
That's pretty common, at least.
We, we don't have a lot of tier one left.
No.
We have, we have quite a few tier two, but not a lot of tier one.
So, the tier one, tier two is the same rate?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, just the officer is a different rate?
I'm, I'm tier one just by a little amount. I think you're, you're part tier one, aren't you?
Tier two.
You're tier two?
I'm tier six. I look at my retirement, and I'm just tiers everywhere.
Of joy.
Can't retire. Anyway, we're getting off, so. Anything else that you can think of?
I don't have anything else, I'm only to ask specific questions. I mean, I could go through all the, I mean, I should say what's real life, but usually it's a good map in that way, but.
I'll go ahead and take an opportunity then to point out a few things that I think this document actually is useful for, for those people that don't want to read all a hundred and, however many pages. There's a few letters right up the, at the front that kind of give a brief snapshot and overview. There is at the back of the report, a statistical section that looks at ten years of data. There's actually some interesting facts in here about our employment numbers, our biggest property taxpayers, and just, you know, how we're accomplishing some things. So, I think that statistical section in the back, this is what makes it a CAFR, is useful at times, so I guess I'm just pointing it out. Remember that this is here if it, if you ever need to have this information.
That gives you bigger pressure.
It gives you a good history and kind of friends, it's really good to look at. And also, I should point that we, you guys did get a, we did get a permit also, maybe I'm going again, for the CAFR for June third, September fifteenth, so hopefully we'll see another one next year, because we did some of the.
Well, that's, that's, those are professional, helps us out tremendously. So, it's a nice partnership, and we continue to learn and improve and work through all the GAZB statements.
I think sixty-eight was fifty-four pages or something, I didn't read all.
God bless you for reading.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Have you, just since we're the executive board of another body, which is South Central Organizational Development Group, have you ever been contacted about submitting a proposal for doing their audit?
I'm not, no. I'm not aware, I've been there eight years.
Yeah, well, this would have been within the last year.
Yeah, but I don't notice anything like that.
Are you interested in receiving?
Yeah, it would be.
Okay, thank you.
And we're always there for questions, if you need anything or that kind of stuff. We'll probably sign coming back again in, in July, or to do some interim stuff, or tax office, and if we're able, and I think the September day's been working well, somewhere around there, so, for the audit, because it's not quite as much, as big as you guys are, it's hard to do it before that, with all the sixty-day accounts paid, or we're seeing multiple testing, and that's the issue, so.
I do appreciate that.
It seems it works a lot better, doesn't it? That August was crazy, like, for you guys, especially when we had to come back, and it doesn't work well, but, so I think it's a little, a little that way.
When, when will you know the September date?
Um, we usually start scheduling after talking rooms about, and you'll start hearing from somebody. But we just kind of try to keep it sane if it works, and so if there's any days that doesn't work for you guys, you already know.
I was thinking of October this year, or September maybe, or.
Right, early, earlier.
Early October.
Yeah, it wasn't hunting season, I know that.
Got a little small window between.
Well, this year's a big birthday celebration, I want to take a big trip to, I don't know, where? Yes?
Somewhere.
I mean, it's the big three-oh.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be a long. I have a child that just turned thirty-one yesterday, so, no.
They call that smoking mirrors.
I think I'm pretty good at that nowadays.
So, Carrie, unless the ladies have anything additional, Kevin's with us, I don't know if you've met Kevin Hock, our Main Road Superintendent?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Here for a variety of things, including your, your audit reports.
Well, thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you for driving all the way down here, Marty. You're probably excited to get out. What do you guys have, you're, you're in feet of snow up there, aren't you?
Well, it's getting better, but.
We have snow again today.
Yeah, we're going to get less than an inch today, though, so I think.
So, Carrie, as I mentioned to you when we started, you have a few minutes early, that someone may show up late.
I, I believe you said general public.
Thank you very much.
Did you guys have options for use of forms? Can write a complaint? Basically, let's, let's do it round and all the way down?
I don't think so, actually. We don't have that technology, or, well, we could do EFP.
Consider that, okay.
We don't have anything like Skype or something like that. Last year, Karen might have called Ann, but it, so.
I don't know, I haven't found last year, possibly.
I don't remember, it all goes together.
I might have been on the initial exit thing or something, that she called, and we guys came down for presentation.
They all blends together, we've been talking about the school district all this time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, you guys, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Love you.
I see the.
I don't need it anymore.
Don't go anywhere.
There's no surprises, I think we got it all.
Since this is going to be on the open of a public hearing, do we hold two of these on the supplemental budget?
We open the public hearing and take public comments, and then do the resolution based on.
So, we don't have to have two hearings, just one?
Yes.
Well, my watch says ten thirty.
Okay.
So, we're going to open up the public hearing on the mental health supplemental budget at this time, and Ann, before we ask for public comment, maybe you can give it over to you, and I'll, I'm available for public comment.
So, as it's been publicized and discussed for quite a while, we have contracted with Lake Health District to provide Lake County Mental Health Services. When we estimated and adopted our budget last spring, we weren't sure what that was going to look like, so now that we are in the actual business of contracting with them, it requires some appropriation changes for our budget. We have, in our contract, provided all of our funding to the Health District, and they have assumed all liability from that date of that contract. So, even something that happened two or three years ago, four years ago, they're assuming that liability. We had set aside reserve dollars for potential liability scenarios. This supplemental budget allows us to release those reserve dollars so they can be part of the contract payments to the Mental Health, Lake Health District. When you budget a reserve, you do not appropriate it. You're telling the public, this is a savings account, we are not spending it. To allow us to spend it on the intended use, we allow the public to make comment, to voice concerns, whatever, whatever opinion they might have, we involve them in the process before we appropriate the reserve. It has been published in the newspaper, I think you, I'm not sure if you have that copy with you, but it's.
We, we have the copy.
Great, so it's, it's notified to the public that way, and then we, we notify the hearing and allow for public comment. Great. So it's, it's notified to the public that way and then we notify the hearing and allow for public comment. Any questions about how this works? In, just to provide a little bit more information, we are continuing to get two payments for mental health services that we received in the past. We are getting the GOBE payment, which is Greater Oregon Behavior Health Inc. Okay, great, Inc. We get that money based on capitation rates, we get that monthly. We also are still getting the state contract dollars, we get that monthly as well. Oregon, it's, oh, Oregon Health Authority. Actually, they call it something different when it comes in. So we're ranging anywhere between, it's around eighty to ninety thousand dollars a month that we're getting in and then have to transfer to the Lake Health District. So until changes are made with those contracts, we are in a position of passing through these dollars. Next budget year, if, if we don't have any knowns on these contract payments, we will still continue the budget to pass through payments.
So we've chatted about that a little bit. And what's the process again for it to be able to go direct to them instead of through us?
I believe, and I, and I, this is kind of secondhand information. I haven't been involved in some of these discussions. I believe the GOBE payment can go to the Health District once certain.
Criteria?
Have been met. Maybe even, you know, things put in place. I think that payment can be transferred sooner. The health, the state contract with Lake County, I believe, stays in place until we are no longer the Mental Health Authority. So as long as we are named the Mental Health Authority, we will receive that contract. Well, we, we're agreeing to the contract and that for the payment. So it will be a discussion between the boards and the Mental Health Advisory Group probably on who should, can you be the Mental Health Advisory?
I, I pulled down quite a bit of information. I don't want to say I'm that fluent on it, but being the Mental Health Authority, the advisory group reports to us, not to the Health District. There's some compliance things they have to do. They're working on their bylaws and we're looking at that right now. But as a Mental Health Authority, those certain dollars still pass through us. And it's a, basically a checks and balance thing as the Mental Health Authority. The only way that I know is to completely give up that to the state. And I'm not sure that's the right thing to do.
So you give it up to the state and not the hospital?
You have to, I think you give it up and then, I, I don't know, Ann. I'm not, I would botch it all up here in a public meeting. I'm still researching it.
We're still considered the Mental Health Authority, lest we, before we ourselves, uh, and then the state. Back when I first came on, we had Lutheran and we had a scenario where the money was passed directly to them without us. And that, that cost and profit back in the days that had yet to resolve.
No, I think, I think it still passed through us. It's just their allocation of the dollars might not have been the right.
There was one fund that was directed to them.
Okay, well, we can leave this public hearing open until the end of business or we can close it.
Aye, don't anticipate.
I don't either. But I'm fine with closing the public hearing if everyone else is. We'll close the public hearing.
Unless Kevin has come.
On the Mental Health supplemental budget at this time. And we'll end up a discussion with the board relative to it.
Well, I, I'm just going to make a motion based around, there is no public input. And so I'd like to make a motion in the matter of supplemental budget and reserve balances to accept resolution number two thousand sixteen dash zero seven. And I guess being supplemental budget, I'll read this one part down here. It is hereby directed that salaries decreased three hundred thousand, contingency decreased six thousand four hundred and fifty-one, capital decreased twenty-eight thousand two hundred and six dollars, reserve decreased to zero, and materials and service increased to eight hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. For the record.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution number two thousand sixteen dash zero seven in the matter of the supplemental budget and reserve balances. And all of the amounts are duly noted for the record. So I won't repeat those. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Question carries.
Ann, thank you for giving that whole trip.
Now, I haven't, since we talked last week, had any, you know, Denise, if you've been contacted by our next.
I have not.
Presenter. We have a few minutes before ten forty, that timed item, and we need Mr. Bailey on the phone for not only him, but pretty much everything else that comes after it. So I would suggest we take a recess for the next few minutes. If the plane shows up here in the next few minutes, we'll promptly get back. And otherwise, we'll take a seven, eight minute break.
Copy.
Copy?